Did you see this?
Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet regular session on June 14, 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners Court Room, County Administration Building, 207 Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is Indication Pledge of Allegiance, so U.S. Texas flag, Commissioner Aldrich will lead us.
Father, thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings that you bestow upon us continually. We ask that we become more aware of those and respond to them as appropriately as we can. Father, things will happen today according to your will, and we ask that your will is what we seek in making decisions on behalf of the citizens of Brazos County. Ask that you continue to look after, protect, and give peace and comfort to those who are on the line of defense of our liberties. Ask also that you bless those who keep us healthy and who keep us smart. In the name of the almighty King, I ask all these things. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Second item on the agenda is to call for citizens' input and dark concerns. And we have one that turned in a notice to speak, Helen Washington.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Helen Washington. I live at 2300 Wilkes Street in Bryan, Texas. I'm here to ask the county, do they plan to do another site where people can dump tires because they're being throwed at this place all over the neighborhood? On the corner where I live is Wilkes in Oklahoma. It's a little small run washway there, and I've got, I pulled them out of there. But I think if we had another site like we had a couple of years ago, not for businesses, but for citizens that see tires on the side of the road, then we'll, you know, collect them and bring them and put them in there because the city will let you take four with your utility bill. But I'm just asking the county if they would do another, if they have any plans to do another dump site in the fall or whenever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Washington. Any other citizens want to come up and speak? Hearing none, we will consider and take action on Agenda Ibs 3 through 22. Number three is selection of nine public members of four alternate and four alternates to serve on the Brazos Salary Grievance Committee for calendar year 2022 pursuant to Section 152.1.015 of the Texas Local Government Code.
Move.
Well, let's see. Let's pull the, I think Karen was gonna let me pull the things, and then we'll pass it once we get all the-
Very good.
Judge? And so this is, this is pursuant to the 152.1.015 Texas Local Government Code, and the county judge is required to draw names from a list of grand jurors from the preceding year for salary grievance committee. And I'll first draw the first nine names, and they will become the members provided they accept. And then we'll draw four alternates to be recorded by the Commissioners Court minutes. And once the names have been selected, the members and alternates will receive letters from Brazos County for further instructions. Derek Berger. I guess, are y'all recording?
Yes.
Enid Jimenez. Hillary Campbell. Joseph Langley Powell. Jan Fanstiel. P.A. P.F.A.N. Victoria Lemon McCoy. Audrey Hughes. Jackie Park. Where are we at right now?
Eight.
Martissa An-Gianu.
A.M.G. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so that was nine.
Nine, yes.
All right. And we pulled four. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Sandra Baxter. Austin Fleming. Timothy Scott. Frances Norman. Okay.
Judge, have these, any of these people approved, agreed to serve yet?
No, we have to, we didn't, they don't even know yet.
So what's gonna happen if they don't agree to serve?
So the first nine will be contacted if they accept. Then, then we've got the nine. Then we got four alternates that if they, if someone does not accept, then hopefully we'll be able to make up the nine out of that.
Okay.
If we don't get nine, then we may have to come back and readdress it.
We'll draw again.
We'll draw.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion.
Motion made.
To approve those.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number four is approval of vehicle use and driver policy. The policy with a minimum standard policy will apply to all departments superseding all other previously approved driver and vehicle use policies.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number five is request from Constable One for renewal of contract 23-007 of the Eagle, a computerized program through the Texas Workforce Commission.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is request approval for a wire transfer of $5,171,472.24 to HHSC Funds for PGY2 Advanced Comprehensive Hospital Increased Reimburse Program.
Sure. Move approval. Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is approval of the following items to be included in Brazos County Proposed Budget, FY 2223 budget. A is the increase of the county's contribution for medical health insurance from $15,912 annually to $16,476 annually. No charge for, no change to the employee contribution. B is updated workman's, workers' compensation rates based on the 2022-
Judge, I move approval A through E. Second.
Okay. Motion made. Seconded to approve A through E. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Judge.
Discuss E.
Okay. I'd like to not just discuss E, I'd like to pull it in lieu of information that I've received where I think we need to address this again in a budget session.
Can you share what-
So I move, so I move to remove E from the approval.
Okay, first we got a, we've got a motion, and I believe we had a second to approve A through E. So we need to, I believe, deal with that first.
Yep.
Unless somebody wants to-
I don't want to withdraw my motion.
Okay. So do we want to discuss now?
No.
E, I mean, we've, we've got a motion, so we've got discussion. Does, do we want to discuss, I heard the comment on E. Do we want to discuss that now?
Yeah, I think it needs some further discussion maybe than what we can do here, but I do think that we need to look deep, more deeply into it. One thing I did is requested a, for discussing it now, I requested that HR get me a list of people who were employee population compared to the living wage of $16.41 per hour, and that is who I think that we were most concerned about addressing the issues. Those happened to be 40 full-time employees, and about 4.18% of our current employee population in the departments, and the number of those folks are in 19 are in road and bridge, 14 in facility services, and then the other juvenile services, but they're one for the others. So of those 14 positions, we're talking about a seven and a half percent increase for everybody all the way across the board. And I believe that the intent was is to benefit these people at the lower end of the wage rate. And I think that it, we're asking taxpayers to spend a heck of a lot of money on compensating people well in excess of what they would need above that area. So I think we need to have further discussion because we're talking about seven and a half percent increase for everybody with the focus on only 4% of our, 4.18% of our current employee population. And I cannot vote for this with that knowledge.
I concur, Judge. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I apologize. Judge, I recall that I made the motion, and it was my intent, since my colleague speaks to my intent, it was my intent that all employees of Brazos County be given the same raise percentage, 7.5, for the reasons that we want to be fair and equitable. We want to show the appreciation we have for each employee. We're not picking a certain few or a certain many. And in view of the times, in view of the situation, living conditions, living expenses, it was my desire to reward everyone that works for Brazos County with a 7.5% wage increase.
Yeah. I'd also like to comment. When we discussed this in workshop last week, Ernest Stutz, our facilities manager, who, who employs, I think, 13 or 14 of these lowest-paid employees, said the seven and a half percent and the 1% merit would take care of his people and that they would be okay, that they were, some of them were coming hat in hand to him, but he thought they could manage with the seven and a half percent plus the 1% merit. And I too feel for the people that are at the lowest level of our, of our pay scale.
Judge, I would concur with Commissioner Colley that the lowest level, level of our pay scale probably needs this 7.5. I would disagree that the commissioners, as an example, themselves need a 7.5% cost of living increase. I, I'm very much against that, Judge. What I will tell you is that it's my belief that the citizens of our county are feeling the exact same pressure that our employees are. In other words, our employees, for the most part, are citizens of the county. And I, my concern was that we look very hard at the no new revenue tax rate, and if we did that first and then could get a 7.5, I'm for it. I'm 100% for it, but I don't believe that's reasonable, Judge. So my, my point would be that this 7.5, we're hanging this out in front of our employees right now, and they believe they're gonna get it. A lot of these families are mentally spending that money. That's not fair to them because we don't know how much money we're gonna be able to, to apply to this thing. So I think having this approved, if you will, right now by motion, is a tremendous mistake. I think that this is probably one of the more important things that we're gonna look at this year.
Well, and it is, it would be a motion to approve it into the proposed budget. So it's not a, so it's not approved yet.
Exactly.
I agree with you. We take, we take a step.
It is the, that everybody's feeling, and I totally agree with you, but much like our citizens, you, if, if their gasoline prices go up double, which, you know, it has in the last year and a half, if their food costs, I heard yesterday, food's gone up 10% year over year. So everybody's experiencing it. So what they're gonna have to do is exactly what we'll have to do. If we increase, if we put into the proposed budget the seven and a half percent and try to take care of our employees, when, as we build this budget, we're gonna have to cut some. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to stay within that three and a half percent. So that would be where I would want to be, is we take care of the employees first, and then we look at what else we can make to make the, make the budget balance and not, we are not gonna go over that three and a half percent cap. There's no way. So that's how I think we could do it and still try to be as, as accommodating and, I mean, we all recognize what we're, we're dealing with.
Absolutely.
There's just no question. I mean, if you drive a car or you go to the grocery store, you recognize what's happening.
We're in tough times.
And it's gonna continue to happen. We're gonna continue to have problems. So I, I think it's a good idea to, to plug it into the proposed budget, and let's see if we can balance on the other end. We still got another facet this. We'll have to, we'll have to deal with it. If, if, if we work through it and we find that there's just no way, then we may have to come back and address something, but I think-
And we won't, we won't know that until we get our, the approved tax rate.
That's right.
Right. But we would be doing our employees a disservice, in my opinion, if we pass the seven and a half, and they start mentally thinking that money's coming. It's on, it's on the way, making decisions based on it.
Then the message, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
I would suggest the message be sent or given that this is not approved but proposed. I'd like the auditor to speak to and our budget officer to speak to.
May I make one statement? There's no doubt, I think all of us agree, that we would like to do as much as we possibly can with staying within our budget.
Mm-hmm. And we're gonna stay within our budget.
Well, then we can't do seven and a half, I'm afraid.
The law says that we must.
My objective relative to the budget would be is, is if we're going to realize, and I do, the need for compensation to be increased for employees of Brazos County, particularly with regard to the lower end where inflation hits hardest. But, and also for retention of employees and also for the ability to be able to recruit employees because we've heard things about that as well. But at the same time, in lieu of the fact, like Mr., like Commissioner Ford has said, if we were, the trade-off to that would be is, is we would need to look at establishing a budget based on the no new revenue rate in order to not ask the citizens of Brazos County who own properties to pay an additional three and a half percent.
You're not asking them.
They get nothing out of it. We're asking them for more money, and they get nothing out of it. So I think that the, the objective is, is if we're going to do this, we need to do this with the idea that we need to focus on as an adoption, and I'd like to, maybe we need to say that in the, in, in our budget meetings, is, is that we're focusing on, because of the increase in valuations, and as extreme as they are, and the fact that inflation's going up and people are having to pay more in property taxes, that we establish a no new revenue rate as our target for our budget. And if that were the case, then I think we can consider all kinds of things. But I'm, I cannot in good conscience vote for increases in our expenditures in Brazos County that would cause us to require property taxpayers in Brazos County to pay more than they paid last year.
So, I mean, just reminds you that 35% of a county's budget is mandated by the state. So no matter what it costs, we have to pay. I mean, that's, that's, is a requirement by the state. So, you know, even if we were to try to do something, I'm not sure that we could, even based on what those costs may be. So I, I think we have to be, we have to, there's no question, the legislature has passed a law that says we stay within three and a half percent budget unless we want to go out for an election, which I don't think anybody would want to do. So, but I think, the budget officer has got to be able to build a budget and has got to be able to put that together. If we delay and delay and delay, then that just pushes off at a much later time. Of course, where are we gonna get this done? And there are timelines that are now in the, that are required. So again, I, I believe that-
Well, is it the will of this Commissioners Court to seek a budget that is based on the no new revenue rate, or is that already out the window?
Commissioner, I would argue that the revenues that we discussed last week were no new revenues.
Okay.
And we were still in the black after the COLA. And things change every day, though. Unfortunately, if you change the COLA every day, it makes our moving target, which it is always a moving target because the no new revenue rate also includes, you add on top of that, the additional expenditures for indigent healthcare. You add on top of that, the additional expenditures for indigent defense. So it's, it's a moving target, but I would argue that if we use the exact same tax revenue that we used last year, we should be able to fit in no new revenue. I will tell you, I did a revenue review again yesterday. One of the things that had to go up was 381 agreements. I had to add $200,000 to that. I haven't looked at the TIF agreements yet, but that's gonna go up too, which is a reduction of revenue. I'm trying to think else what I could add that is helpful to this conversation.
Okay. Maybe, maybe I should rephrase this. I mean, I would like to know if it is the will of this Commissioners Court, as it is mine, that we have a budget based on the no new revenue rate because of the amounts of money that citizens are paying in property taxes, and they're paying all the additional expenses as well, that we establish that as a baseline. I, I just like, would like to know if that's the will of the Commissioners Court.
That's been the original-
Then in that case, let's go ahead and call the question.
I'd like to call the question.
Go ahead and call the question. I will vote against item E.
I'm forced to vote against E. Is there any possible way that the court would consider breaking these out so I could vote for A through D?
No.
And then we-
No. We call the question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So we got a motion and a second to approve following limits, A through E.
Is it, is it, well, then let's record this. The motion was retracted, correct?
No.
No.
The motion was not-
The motion is A through E, so I have to vote against everything in order to vote against E?
Correct.
Yes.
That is not, that is not the way I would desire to do this. I'd like, I'd rather take these items individually. So my vote, vote, my vote would be recorded relative to that.
The motion is called.
If we're not, Commissioner Colley?
Yes, dear.
I'm trying to explain.
I think we understand you.
Well, I want to make sure it's on the record.
You've said it several times, sir.
Against, no, I have not stated. I'm, I'm being forced to vote against A through D in order to vote against E.
And we understand that, sir.
Okay. I just want that to be on the record.
That was clear at the beginning of your discussion.
Okay. All right. So it's motion made and seconded. All in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, raise your right hand. So it's a 3-2 vote. It passes. Number eight is approval of contract 22-137 Residential Services for Juvenile Woodward Youth Corporation.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is approval of contract 22-143 with Hawthorne Suites College Station for Brazos County.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is acceptance of a special warranty deed for .036 acre land right of way for public utility usement for .058 acre land from Brittany and McAdes Faria to be used for improvements to be made on Strab Road, Sikes Locating Precinct 1.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made. Seconded. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is consider and take action on CEO Technologies LLC Utility Permit to Conduct 60-foot Road Board and Lay 948 Feet of Conduit and Cable Within the Right-of-Way of Stasland Road to Provide Internet Service. the right of way of Stasiel Road to provide internet service to a customer site located in precinct one. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number twelve is consider and take action on Brazos WiFi utility permit to conduct sixty-foot road board and lay four thousand one hundred and thirty feet of longitudinal cable under and along the right of way of Andert Road for installation of internet service sites located precinct two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number thirteen is consider and take action on Wickst Creek Special Utility District utility permit to construct a road board for one-inch water line crossing under Elmo Weeden Roads eight hundred and fifty feet northwest of Henshawling Lane sites located precinct two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number fourteen is consider and take action on Frontier Southwest Utility Permit to lay fourteen hundred feet of copper cable within three feet of the right of way, of right of way line of Dilly Shaw Tap Road starting at FM one nine seventy-four. Lines being relocated to accommodate county improvements being made to Dilly Shaw Tap Road sites located precinct two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number fifteen is approval of final plat for Reliance Ridge subdivision fifty-seven point one seven acres unplanted part of Track One, Abner Lee Senior Survey, A dash thirty-two, City Brian ETJ Brazos County, Texas, sites located precinct two. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seventeen is tax refund application for the following.
I move approval A, B.
You missed sixteen.
You did. Passed sixteen, but I'm.
Let me back up then before we do that one. Then sixteen, approval of treasurer's report for April twenty-two.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None motion carries. Number seventeen is tax refund application for the following.
I move approval A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eighteen is budget amendments, budget amendments FY twenty-one slash twenty-two, thirty-five point one through thirty-five point three.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nineteen is personnel change status.
Move approval A and B.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? None motion carries. Number twenty is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number eight one one five six eight five through claim number eight one one five eight three four and claim number nine zero zero five one oh five through claim number nine zero zero five one fifty-one.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made, seconded discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We will skip down to number twenty-three and is acknowledgement of the twenty twenty-two, twenty slash twenty-one Brazos County Emergency Services District, ESD, number four, final audit. Number twenty-four is a acknowledgement of the FY twenty-one, twenty-two budget actuals by funds as of June eighth, twenty twenty-two. Number twenty-five, juvenile director's report on detention population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Hi, we have thirty-seven juveniles in detention, twenty-five males, eight females, three in med ISO per protocols, and thirty-two on electronic monitors.
Thank you. Twenty-six is sheriff's report on inmate population. Sheriff.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Seeing a increase today, we're up to six hundred and thirty-nine.
Wow.
Five hundred and thirty-nine males, a hundred females. That's a trend that's likely to continue through the summer. It's, can't explain why, but it's common to see that. And then our electronic monitoring, we have fifty-eight active and sixteen pending.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. We will move back up and convene an executive session.
Do announcements?
Oh, yeah, we should do. Number twenty-seven is announcement of interest items and possible future agenda topics.
Judge, I'd like to make a statement. I want to thank Trudy Hancock and Crystal Ocon for their presentation last week on the election workshop. It was thorough and very informative. I certainly learned things I didn't know about election preparation and all the steps necessary to hold an election. Of the election administration took all the heat from the citizens, I want to say that the blame for not having Galilee Baptist churches a polling place is shared by not only the election office, but by the political parties and the Commissioner's Court as well. But most importantly, I want to let Trudy and Crystal know how much we value their service and what a great job they do, and kudos to the election administration staff as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Judge, it, oh, excuse me. Commissioner, you want to go first?
No.
Okay. Judge, I have discovered during this process that probably the most important thing the Commissioner's Court does for Brazos County is our elections, and I, I heard a lot during that hearing. I also would like to call to attention that not having a voting location within thirty minutes of people's house out in East County is extremely important. This consideration was brought to me by a committee of citizens asking that instead of us just trusting the election administrators thing blindly, not, not taking any further action on the thing, that we should probably have a citizens panel, if you would, that would look into all of these issues, that would make recommendations to us and make recommendations to the election administration. I'm asking, Judge, that this be considered at a future meeting as soon as possible that we, that we take it under consideration of doing some sort of a citizens committee that would address those issues that we heard in the hearing. I don't want us to have that hearing, acknowledge that things are not right, and then take no action on it.
Well, I mean, certainly we have to follow the law, and that's part of what that discussion was. I think it was shown from the beginning what the law is and laid it out, and then I think that's how Commissioner Berry saw that it's, it wasn't. So we can, we can take this under advisement, but, but we're gonna follow the law no matter what, so.
It, it is within the law that we have a citizens advisory committee to help us determine what polling locations are?
Well, I don't want to get into discussion here.
Right, no, no, no. I would ask it to be considered in the future.
I, I hear you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
No.
Any other announcement or possible agenda topic? Hearing none. Number twenty-eight, of citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none. We will move back up and convene an executive session pursuant to the following. Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four to discuss the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties of county personnel, and B, Texas Government Code five five one point zero seven four to discuss the employment or compensation of Commissioner's Court members. We're gonna need, I think Karen, you'll take notes in this one. We'll need Commissioner's Court, we'll need Katie and Nina, and was there, oh, yeah, Rihanna. There you go. I couldn't read my writing, Rihanna. And I think that's it that we need in.
Do you need two?
No. So the time is ten thirty-four. Okay. Are y'all ready to record? Okay. We're coming back out of executive session. It's eleven fifty-four, and there's no action to be taken. The next item is to adjourn. Thank you.